Good evening. My name is Trudy Adams and I am a member of the League of Women Voters of the Ann Arbor area. I welcome you to tonight's forum featuring candidates for Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners, Districts 2 and 7. The candidates will be on the ballot in the general election on Tuesday, November 6, 2018. We are broadcasting from the studios of CTN in Ann Arbor. The League of Women Voters is pleased to sponsor these forums. The League is a nonpartisan civic organization that encourages informed and active participation of all citizens in our government. The League works to increase understanding of major public policy issues and seeks to strengthen and broaden knowledge about our form of government and democracy. While the League does not support candidates or parties, we do take stands on issues we have studied. One of the League's most important goals is to assist voters in making informed choices at the polls, and thus, we bring you tonight's program. Our moderator this evening is Diane Nearing, who will explain the format and get us started.
Thanks, Trudy. It's my honor. The first thing to do is introduce the candidates. The first candidate is Kevin Jardine. He is running in District 2. The next candidate is Sue Schenk. She is also running in District 2. And Andy Labarre, number 3, is running in District 7. Joe Marinari was invited but was unable to come tonight. He is also on the ballot for District 7. The format will be as follows. Each candidate will have an opening statement of up to one minute. Each candidate will have a closing statement of up to 90 seconds. I will ask the question once, and these questions have been submitted by the Washtenaw County community. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond. The timers, Ellen Lafferty and Chris Samida, thank you, sorry, Chris, will be our timers for this evening. They will be holding up their paddles, indicating the remaining time, and then at the end of the time, they will hold up a stop sign. And I'm asking the candidates to please stop when indicated so that everyone has an equal opportunity to participate. The order of the speaker was determined by a drawing before we began, and the candidates are seated in order of that draw. We're going to keep things simple. An opening statement will start with candidate number 1. The first question will also be candidate number 1, and the closing statement will be candidate number 1. And there is a very good logic behind this, which I will try not to explain to you. Right, I am going to ask Kevin. The first question for each candidate will be, I'm asking specifically about your district, and the rest of the questions will be countywide questions. So, Mr. Jardine, pardon me?
Opening Statement.
Oh, an opening statement, sorry. Thank you. That's why Trudy's here. We will have opening statements first. Mr. Jardine, your opening statement.
Yes, thank you very much. I'd like to start by thanking the League of Women Voters and also CTN for hosting this event. My name's Kevin Jardine, and I'm running for County Commissioner, District 2. The district encompasses generally just the north side of the county. I've been a lifelong resident of Washtenaw County and graduated from high school at Ann Arbor here in high school, best high school here. And, you know, a lot of things have been concerning me about the community, about various aspects of it, and my parents have always told me from a young age, and so has my church, that you need to get involved in the community, you need to give back. And that's why I got into politics to begin with, was to serve and to give back to my community. And hopefully, as your next county commissioner, I can fulfill that role in community.
Thank you, Ms. Schenk. Hi, my name is Sue Schenk, and I'm running for County Commissioner in District 2. I'm running for County Commissioner because I love Washtenaw County. I love the quality of life that we enjoy here, and I want to do everything that I can to promote and protect that quality of life. I have been working to preserve open space and farmland for many years and will continue to do so in capacity as Washtenaw County Commissioner. I will work very hard and have actually begun working very hard to make sure that all the people of our district and county have the resources they need. I will promote small businesses, I will be accessible and accountable, and I will work hard for you. I'm an attorney with a degree in resource policy and analysis, and I've served as a Northfield Township trustee. I've served on the Board of the Huron River Watershed Council. I chair the Washtenaw County Agricultural Lands Preservation Advisory Committee. I chair my township land preservation committee. I participate in my historical society, and I will continue working hard for you as a Washtenaw County Commissioner. Thank you.
Mr. Labarre.
Hi there. My name is Andy Labarre. I am the incumbent county commissioner for District 7. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for holding these forums and for the sober, approachable way you do it. I appreciate that. I've had the honor to represent District 7 since I was elected in 2012 and began serving in 2013. This is now my third two-year term on the Board, and I've been privileged these last two years to serve as Chair of the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners. My district is the east side of Ann Arbor, District 7. Primarily on the Board, I try and focus largely on human service issues, as well as the county's fiscal picture generally, and try always to be an advocate for my district and a voice for my district to the county rather than a voice to the county back to the district. I'm excited to be here tonight, and thank you again for hosting the forum.
Thank you. And now we will go to the first question, and this is going to be district-specific Mr. Jardine, what are the main and very unique challenges facing your district within the county? And if elected, how do you plan to address these challenges?
Well, first, thank you for the question. Challenging problems for the district that we have right now are really roads and our education. Right now, our roads are, most of the roads in that side of the district are actually all gravel and dirt roads that are not very well kept up, and the rest of the roads are not very well maintained either. So, one of the initiatives that I would like to get going is to actually put better quality materials in with the roads to actually have longer-lasting roads. Yes, it costs more, but it costs less money in the long run rather than having to repave roads over and over. And secondly, the educational system that we have right now in the rest of the county outside of Ann Arbor is really, the funds are being misappropriated and disproportionately appropriated to where most of the funding is going toward Ann Arbor Public Schools, and it's showing very evidently in most of the other schools that there is a high concentration of students to teachers, and there's also lower amounts of resources to where they're having to cut various curricula, like the arts and the music programs in various schools. And these are things that I would like to take a look at and to try and fix.
Thank you, Ms. Schenk.
Thank you. I think we can all agree that the roads need a lot of attention. Some of the other things that are issues in District 2 are preservation of a viable agricultural community. Right now, it is very strong. There's a lot of pressure on it by development, and that development needs to be development that respects our community, and we also need to be continuing to work to preserve farmland and foster small businesses in our district. Another issue in our district is that there are pockets where people, and especially children, aren't getting the resources they need. Their parents may be working multiple jobs to try to make ends meet, and those kids still need a little help from the outside so that they can succeed, and I've been working very hard on that issue. There are lots of issues that affect the whole county, and I am also working on those. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labarre, talk about District 7.
So, District 7 is located within the city of Ann Arbor proper. It's basically the eastern half of the city. It has pockets of great wealth and pockets of economic challenge, but they are primarily city residents, and much of what the county does is not flashy or exciting. We don't, you know, do the zoning or the building that folks often pay so much attention to. State government goes from theory to real life at the county level. We exist to provide those state-level services and to do so in a fashion that allows them to get out to our citizens in an accessible way. And the citizens in District 7, much like the citizens throughout the county, they have human service needs, they have public health needs, they have community mental health needs, they have public safety needs, even within the city where they're provided by the Ann Arbor City Police Department. We work in tandem with the sheriff's office in terms of dispatch and other things. So, it's the whole spectrum of services that individuals need within District 7. The challenge I have found as a commissioner is to represent the specific needs of your district as you try and craft the broad policy for the county as a whole. It's a challenge, but it's one that I enjoy doing and that I've found great worth in trying.
Thank you. Ms. Schenk, question number 2. Commissioners are elected from separate districts, but they are also responsible for decisions that affect the entire county. In what ways do priorities of your district's constituents differ from the countywide issues? What ways do they overlap? And when priorities differ, what will be your process in making a decision?
To go to the process first, I am not being elected to the county commission to represent my views. I am being elected by the people to represent them, and so by going to the people, I will find the right answer. Of course, I have quite a bit of experience and quite a bit of information at hand, but it's the will of the people that's the important thing to me, and I think that those things are going to coincide nicely. I don't think that the needs of my district are in conflict with the needs of the rest of the county. As Mr. Labarre said, we have human service needs, we have mental health needs, we have environmental needs. We all need to breathe clean air and drink clean water. We all need to have access to medical services. So, while people who live in the city may live closer to some of those services, and some of the people in my district need some help getting those services out there, I think that in general, the needs are not in conflict. And by talking to the residents of my district, I don't think that it's going to be a problem to deal with mediating that.
Thank you. Mr. Labarre?
Well, I've found that pragmatism is a useful tool on the Board of Commissioners. We all have, in the nine districts, particular needs that our residents have, and we have to make it work with the whole. In the case of District 7, many of the services that folks think of are provided by the city level, but when you think about those issues of public safety in terms of the sheriff and the prosecutor's office, public health broadly through our public health department, and community mental health, they have those needs from the county quite a bit, just like every other district. And the challenge there, I think, is to bring those needs to the table, to represent the constituents' interests, and to understand that you have eight colleagues with you, all of whom have their own constituents, their own specific needs. We're all charged with that broad goal of ensuring that the county generally is meeting the human service needs and the other needs of our residents, our citizens, that we're being good fiscal stewards, and that we're being, as a group of nine individuals, accessible and useful representatives of the people. That's a challenge, but it's something that, again, is worth doing and doing well, and I'm fortunate to have had that opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Jardine?
Thank you for the question. First and foremost, most, taking what the two of them just said, most of the problems are countywide problems, and there aren't very many district-specific problems. More of the rural areas encompassing District 2 have issues with things like transportation millages, where they're having to pay for various transportation millages that don't really affect them too much. That's one issue that District 2 has that other districts don't. But then again, at the same time, there are things like Ypsilanti has, especially in Ypsilanti Township, has very large gentrification problems with residents and economical standpoint as well. So, you really have to kind of mitigate some of these things. Now, yes, I am going to the Board as a representative for my constituency, but there are a lot of things that can be worked on that are countywide issues that would not have any sort of problems with me dealing with them rather than my constituents. But the millage rates for District 2 are some of the things that can be addressed when you go over scrutinizing the budget as well for things that don't necessarily need to be there, and we can work on those things as we go along.
Thank you. Question number 3. The Board of Commissioners is considering the authorization of two purchase agreements for the county's property on Platt Road, which is in District 7, one with Thrive Collaborative and the other with Avalon Housing. The proposal is to develop the site for residential housing, including some units for low-income residents. Thrive has a proposal to purchase nine acres of this site for $1,250,000, which is considerably below market rate. What is your position concerning the sale of this property, and what impact do you think it will have on the county in general? Mr. Labarre, the question to you first.
The Platt Road development is in my district. I've been essentially the lead voice on that for almost five and a half years, so anyone irritated by the actions we're planning to take should address them squarely at me. Here is the proposition. With the Platt Road site, we will have 50 units of affordable housing. Thirty of those will be affordable at the 30% AMI level. Twenty of those will be affordable at the 60% AMI level for a period of 99 years. That is, for affordable housing in this area, groundbreaking. With Thrive, we are getting environmental capacity that could serve really as a model for not just our community or the state, but frankly, for the nation in terms of the efficiencies it's providing to get to a net-zero development. In exchange for this, the rate we are selling is lower than market rate, but what we get in return is, one, the human capital that can be developed in terms of people having those affordable places to live in a world-class environment, and, two, on an annual basis, it will return roughly $100,000 to the county's treasury. So, over a 40-year period, it will pay back roughly the market gap in terms of purchase price and what we can get on an open-market sale, which, by the way, quickly politically, you are never going to develop that land without some restriction. I can attest to that personally.
Thank you. Mr. Jardine?
Thank you very much. No, I tend to agree with Commissioner Labarre on this one, is that investing in our people and investing specifically in people who are having a little bit more trouble economically speaking is never a bad thing. And what we need to look at is, where's the future going to be? We can't look at that 10 years down the road. We can't even look at that 15 years down the road. We have to take a serious look at where are things going to be 99 years down the road in our community. And when we look through and balance the budgets on things and figure out our various expenditures, we need to look at, is this something that, that far down the road, is this something that's going to be a good investment? It has very similar resemblance to stocks. When you're investing in stocks, you can't invest in stocks for the short term at all. You're never going to make a profit, but to be able to make a profit, you have to hold on to stocks for 10, 20, 30 years. And this is something that we have to do with our communities. We need to make sure that the investments that we're making in our communities are actually things that will pay off for us that far down the road. And like I said before, I don't think that investing in people and investing in our capitals as human beings in this county and in this district are ever going to come back for naught. So, I think it's a good idea, and I would be willing to work on that in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Schenk?
I'm excited about the development. There's clearly a need for more affordable housing in this area. There have been a number of studies that have said exactly that, and so I think one of the things that's really impressive about Washtenaw County is that Washtenaw County is not afraid to be a leader, and this is one place where Washtenaw County is being a leader. We need the affordable housing, we're providing it. It's going to have solar power, it's going to be designed with sustainability in mind, it's going to be a very livable development. I think, to me, that all sounds like very good wins, and it's also in an area where there is transportation, there are a lot of services, and so it's going to be meeting the needs of the people who live there, who will be integrated into the community. So, I say congratulations, Commissioner Labarre. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jardine, you're the first answer for this question. The Washtenaw County Road Commission is a semi-autonomous entity governed by the Board, the County Board of Commissioners, and who appoint the three-member commission. The term for one of the commissioners' seats is expiring at the end of this year. What qualities do you want in a road commissioner? And when the road commission makes controversial decisions, which they do from time to time, what role does the county board have in addressing constituents' concerns with the commission?
Thank you for the question. The road commission has everything to do with the constituents' concerns. I mean, the entire reason that they're there is to serve the community that they're in. Now, as far as what qualifications you would want in somebody, you definitely want somebody who's going to be a forward thinker. Just like I said, housing project, this isn't something that you're looking at two and four years down the road. If you're looking at going back to a certain area of road two and four years down the road, I don't think that you are doing a very good job in the road commission at all. You need to be, we need to be hiring people in that position that would be looking at different ways of using different materials that may not be lower cost at the moment, but different materials of roads that would be longer-lasting. Currently, most of the materials that we're using for our roads are 10- to 20-year materials, and there are other materials out there that are 20- to 40-year materials. Why we're not using those, I'm unsure. We go back and we patch holes with short-term fixes that we have to go back in two to four years and patch again. People that we need in these positions are people that will look 20, 30, 40 years ahead and say, will this last, and how low of a cost of maintenance will it be on things like this? We need people who are open-minded but who are also very frugal with money, because in the end of the day, it's taxpayer money that's going into this stuff.
Thank you, Ms. Schenk.
For a road commissioner, who is not actually an engineer working on the roads, but is kind of like the Board of Commissioners, but for the engineers working on the roads, they're policy directors, I would like to see somebody who listens to people, who respects people, who asks questions so that they really understand what the issues are, and who will treat the roads and the right-of-way as the assets to our community that they are. If somebody comes from outside of the community, the roads are the first and most thing that they see. If somebody lives in a more rural area, the roads are what they see between their house and wherever they're going. So, our roads are an important part of our neighborhoods. I would want honesty and experience with the issues. They don't need to be engineers, but they do need to have experience, such as Rod Green, who was recently appointed to the road commission. He's been active in SEMCOG, so he has a lot of experience in dealing with regional issues and with working with people. I also would like to see somebody who is willing to be an advocate. Part of the reason that the roads are so bad is that there's a real lack of state money coming, and we need more attention to the roads by the state. And so, if our road commissioners feel comfortable advocating for our community, we will do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labarre?
The Republican leadership in Lansing has engaged in pretty high-level buffoonery when it's come to infrastructure for several years, and we are paying that price locally. We had to run a millage in 2006 for half a mill that passed with over 70% for roads. The road commission in Washtenaw County does, I think, a very good job. It exists largely as a function of county government to essentially depoliticize the process of road development and maintenance. That has pluses and cons. A plus is the depolitization and the focus in terms of professionalism. A con is it is one level removed from the people in terms of representation. I would look for someone like Doug Fuller, who is our current Chair, whose term is expiring, someone with, I think, roughly 40 years of experience, someone with experience leading that road commission, and someone who marries the dual needs of understanding how the road network will work to provide citizens the services they need, and the realities of doing these things in a funding environment that is simply asinine in terms of, you cannot make up roads and money out of thin air. We do the best we can, but there are limits.
Thank you. Ms. Schenk, question number 5 is yours to answer first. The Board is in the process of creating a Washtenaw County Youth Commission in partnership with the Neutral Zone and Corner Health Center. Do you support this partnership? And what do you think is the commission's role, what role should be in the partnership? And how do you anticipate working with the group?
I think that the youth commission is a great idea. I could say, I wish I'd thought of it myself. I'm glad that Jason Morgan brought that to the Board. It's an excellent idea. It has two centers for youth, one from Ypsilanti and one from Ann Arbor, and so to foster communication between the youth of those two cities is excellent. I'd like to find a way to bring in youth who live further away from those urban centers because their perspectives are important, too. I would like to learn as much as I can from the youth council. I have two daughters in college, and I have found that their perspectives are very important to me in learning about what's going on. And so, bolstered by my knowledge that my kids and their friends and the people who I've met while I've been out in the neighborhoods have this important experience to draw, for me to draw from, I am interested in learning as much as I can and involving them as much as possible. So, really, as much as they're interested in being involved in learning about the policy behind the decision-making, I am happy to have them be involved with everything that I'm doing on the Board.
Thank you. Mr. Labarre?
Yeah, Commissioner Jason Morgan, I think, had a really good idea with the youth council, and I have certainly voted in support of it. I think if we are going to use it to its optimal level, we will have it function as a voice for, frankly, young adults as they enter civic engagement, but also, I'm hopeful, we will use it as an organ to provide a voice for individuals who are young people of color, particularly young men of color on the east side of the county, to give us a sense of what they face as individuals and as citizens in terms county, to give us a sense of what they face as individuals and as citizens in terms of the challenges before them. I think that is something that is easy to relegate to some other time or some other place to deal with. But the simple truth is, when you talk about county government, you're talking about life and death services at times. When you call 911, that's a human service need of the highest immediate timing. And when you talk about engagement with the public safety community, that's another need where we have to get that youth voice involved. So I'm very much in support of it, even if I haven't had quite the passionate advocacy that Commissioner Morgan has for it. It's certainly got my support and will continue to.
Thank you. Mr. Jardine?
Well, being a little bit younger myself, I do actually see this as a big passion of mine, and I am fully in support of this. Now, one of the things that I've gone back to with issues of this is the money of the county. Money is really tight. Money is really thin. But I think there are also very, very good opportunities of ulterior motives of funding for projects like this. One of my main platform goals is to actually work with the public school boards to get career preparatory and home-building preparatory curriculum in the schools. This is another way of getting these sort of skill sets out to these kids that go to these different centers, whatever their reasoning may be, is to have somebody that's willing to sit down and teach somebody how to make a resume, how to fix different household items, how to maybe change the oil of your car, or how to balance a budget. There are different ways that we can engage with our young people, to get them ready for the next stage in their life. And I think that this is a fantastic way of making sure that our kids are not only felt, feel welcome in their community and feel like they can be active in their community, but also lead them to take that next step in life, to become active and productive members of their community.
Thank you. This is our last question, and Mr. Labarre, yours to start. Commissioners are voting in October on a possible pay increase for themselves, raising the base salary for this part-time position from the current $15,911 to $27,056 by 2020. Do you support or oppose this increase, and tell us why?
Sure. I'm in support, and here's the reasons. We have devalued public service in this country for roughly a generation, be it term limits or be it just general denigration of both elected officials and people who work in the public sector broadly. If you want to have representative voices at the table, you can't relegate service on the Board of Commissioners from a practical effect to simply those who are either independently wealthy, retired, or sort of young enough and unattached enough in terms of family and work commitments that they can do it. It is something that you can be a decent commissioner and just show up for the meetings and a few committees here and there. If you want to be a good commissioner, that's at least a 20-hour-a-week commitment on average, at times much more. We need to compensate folks at that rate that allows them to have that opportunity. So what we did is simply took 45% of the county's median income and set it at that level, built in over two years, which comes out to that $27,056 figure. Some folks will be in support, some will not. But broadly, as a principle, if we expect good public service, we need to afford people the opportunity to provide it.
Thank you. Mr. Jardine?
I am completely opposed to it, and one of the main reasons is, first of all, I think that should be up to the citizens of the county to decide whether or not the commissioners are doing a good enough job that they should deserve to get an increased pay. But I also feel that the citizens are also wise enough to know that, hey, if we don't have enough money to keep funneling funds into our various failing schools, or if we don't have enough money to help fix roads, or help start up these various projects, like the Riverside Park project in Ypsilanti, without paying for, or without starting it first and then asking money for it later, then there's absolutely no reason to double the amount of pay almost of all of our commissioners. Now, if you are going into a public service department, I would understand that if that is your full-time job and that is something that puts bread on your table. Now, this is a part-time service. This is something that is not meant to facilitate your lifestyle. So, yes, a small amount of money is perfectly fine to be giving a commissioner for his services on the board, but I don't feel that this is something that somebody should be able to make a lifestyle out of. And at the same time, there are various projects that I'm working on myself politically, whereas I'm on the various executive boards for the Republican, the Washtenaw County Republicans that I do not get paid for. Things of that nature should not be paid.
Thank you. Ms. Schenk?
I have spent most of my adult life volunteering very consistently for quite a few organizations, some of which I mentioned in my opening statement. Volunteering gets a lot of things done. Government isn't really a volunteer job, and there's a lot of research and work and meeting that goes into really doing the job of county commissioner seriously. And I think that by trying to make the pay reflect more accurately what a half-time position would be, that the county government is acknowledging that and is making a commitment to pay fairly. This commitment needs to extend to all county employees. And one of my commitments to the people of Washtenaw County as I'm running for county commissioner is that I will support measures that result in people being paid a living wage, so that everybody in Washtenaw County, starting with the county employees, will hopefully one day be paid of a living wage, because that's not happening right now across the county. So I don't know if I would really vote for it if I were sitting. I am glad that they are. I think that it's hard for commissioners or anybody to give themselves a pay raise. I do think it's a reflection of the incredible amount of work that goes into being a county commissioner.
Thank you. That brings our -- oh, I'm sorry? We have to do the closing statements.
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah. I'll say?
No.
Your closing statement.
They do the closing statements.
I'm so sorry. You're exactly right.
All right. That's okay. So I'm going to give each candidate an opportunity for a closing statement. You have up to 90 seconds, and we're going to start with Mr. Jardine.
Thank you very much. Again, I'd like to thank the legal women voters again for everything that you've done here and everything that you do to continue to inform the public about how important it is to get out and vote and make wise decisions. I'd like to thank CTN for putting on this event for us. You know, I pride myself in being an out-of-the-box thinker and not voting down straight tenets of party lines and being very open to listening to people and listening to problems and finding a solution that somebody might not have already thought of. I have most of my work experience based in sales, retail, and financial services. I have the experience that's necessary for the position, and I know that me being in a county commissioner position would be something that would benefit the community, benefit our county, and benefit the quality of life and the resources that we have here in the district. I want to thank everybody for paying attention to this and to educating yourselves as to who you're going to vote for and being informed voters at the polls. So I'd ask for your vote in November. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Schenk?
My name is Sue Schenk. I'm a Democrat. I believe in investing in our community and our people. I've been accessible, out-meeting the residents since last November. I've been meeting with community groups and leaders, listening to concerns. I've been learning about what's already happening, talking to people about what they would like to see happen, and how do we get there. I've been working on policies and real projects to solve the very real issues that are facing our community. As your county commissioner, I will work hard. I will be accessible, and I am honest. You can just ask my kids. Sometimes it's even annoying to them. Actually, that's not true. It's not annoying to them. I really want to do a good job and serve the people of our community because I love this community. So if you want to learn more, I have a website, votesueshink.com. And I also have a Facebook page that you could check out. It's Sue Schenk for Washtenaw. I also have my phone number and email on most of my materials, and so if you want to give me a call or email me, I'd love to talk to you. I'd love to meet with you if you're trying to make your decision and you want to know more. Thank you very much, and I hope that you will vote for Sue Schenk on November 6.
Thank you. Mr. Labarre?
It's been a great honor to serve on the County Board of Commissioners, and I thank the residents of the Seventh District who have sent me there. Look, I'm a liberal Democrat in the city of Ann Arbor, but I find a pragmatic way to work with whomever's on the board with me on a whole host of issues. Broadly, I want to get things done. In the 18 months roughly that I've served as chair, we got the really game-changing millage in terms of public safety and mental health through. We've put in place a county equity policy. We're on the verge of passing a nearly half-billion-dollar quadrennial budget, and I'm hopeful that we will finish off Platt Road. I've played a good role in many of those successes, some leadership, some supportive. I'm a completely imperfect representative, but I try and be accessible, and I try and be somebody that will tell folks not just what they want to hear, but rather the simple truth as best I can. And sometimes they have word for me for that. But it's a privilege to serve on the Board of Commissioners. It's a privilege to be involved with county government. It touches human life in a way that other units of government don't. And I would say this, in this day and age in the state of Michigan, it is in many ways a shield that prevents many of our citizens from great despair and distress and keeps them whole in a way that is important from a moral and societal perspective. So I hope my residents will reelect me in November.
Thank you, Mr. Labarre. Jardine?
The League thanks the candidates for participating in tonight's forum, to those who contributed questions, and to CTN for making this program possible. These forums will be rebroadcast on Channel 19 a number of times between now and the election. They are also available on-demand for streaming on your computer or smartphone. Go to our website, l w v ann arbor dot org, and look for the link to the programs. Please urge your friends and fellow residents to watch these forums, too. For additional nonpartisan information on candidates and ballot issues, go to, excuse me, vote411.org, the League's voter resource guide covering local, state, and federal candidates and current proposals that will appear on your ballot. Good night.